Okay, everyone, it's 5:30. I call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a tribe, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you today humbled and grateful to come to you in prayer. Father, I ask you to give everyone in this room a measure of wisdom so as we work to do the business of the city of Plula, we do it in a manner that is pleasing to you. And as we leave tonight, I ask you, Father, to give traveling grace to everyone as they return home to their families. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Scott?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Day?
Here.
Will?
Here.
Alright, everyone is here. The first order on the agenda for Thursday, August 14th is public comments on the agenda. Do you have any comments on the agenda?
Yes, yes ma'am, I have a comment in regards to the meeting in it. I have a comment in regards to the meeting as a whole. Because of our last council meeting that we had, it was not ended properly. Uh, no, you cannot end a meeting just by saying "meeting adjourned" without a proper motion and second by a council, by the council. And at the last meeting, you hit the gavel, said "meeting adjourned" was meeting, the last meeting is currently still in session. Which is a violation of the meetings law. It has to be ended. Uh, that's we're gonna continue with the last meeting. We cannot do a new agenda because you didn't properly end the previous meeting.
I am not certain if that is correct. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and start this meeting. And if I need to be corrected by anyone, then I will do so at that time. However, at this time, I'm going to start this meeting.
Again, according to public meeting law, it's not your opinion. Uh, I was just looking at the Madison Jones page and it says the holding is over there. At approximately one, one hour and thirty-seven minutes and forty-nine seconds, go right to it. You hit the, Ms. Houston told you, end the meeting. You hit the gavel and said "meeting adjourned" without properly closing it. That was the last meeting. Because, uh, who made the motion to end it?
There was no motion.
My, say, say. You cannot, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you cannot end a meeting without a proper motion and second to adjourn the meeting. That's, that's law, open meeting. So because we didn't end that, we cannot begin a previous, we cannot begin the new meeting because our old meeting is still currently in session.
And as I said, I'm not sure if you're correct, so we'll...
Hey, we have attorney to your right. Can the attorney speak to that?
So, uh, again, Robert's Rules of Order do not apply in this tribunal and will not apply in this tribunal unless and until the council adopts Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, the Lawrence Act is, is what you're governed by along with all the ordinances that you currently have in place. Um, so it would be, my recommendation, uh, that you adjourn the prior meeting by a motion and a second and then we could briefly recess and I could look into the issue of whether or not we could continue or we could continue, um, you know, at risk. But I'm not aware of any provision of the Lawrence Act that would prevent you from moving forward with this meeting. But I would recommend that you adjourn the prior meeting.
So, so, okay, after attorney's opinion, I strongly disagree. And that's why sometimes I wish you'd come with law instead of opinions. The meeting, whether you have Robert's Rules of Order as an adoption, but it doesn't have to be adopted. It's standard government, it's the standard governing parliamentary procedure for all meetings. Unless you adopt your own rules to govern your meetings, which we have not. So in order to open and close a meeting, it has to be, to close, it has to be properly moved and second to adjourn a meeting.
I agree with you that the meeting needs to be properly closed. But, um, Councilman Wells, you've been a champion for putting things in right. Now, I'm surprised to hear you be an advocate for anything other than that. Robert's Rules of Order does not apply to this tribunal unless and until this council elects to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. In fact, many times, I've advised this council to consider adopting its own rules, much like the city of Ruston and other cities have adopted.
Okay, next question. How many meetings, how long, you've been telling, almost a year, right? A couple years, right?
Okay.
No, no, that's what I'm asking. Let me finish. And the reason I'm asking is because every meeting, there's been a couple meetings where people get upset. They just end the meeting without a proper move and second to adjourn. But every other meeting, you ask for a council member to make a motion to adjourn and it's properly second. That did not happen. So now, you just can't come back and say, "I'm ending last meeting without properly closing it at the right moment." And we gotta govern this thing right. And we gotta admit that it was wrong. The, the interim mayor said she wasn't aware that it wasn't closed properly and she run into it.
No, I never said that. I did not say that.
You say you...
As a matter of fact, so here's what we're going to do, okay? I think we all understand what happened at the last meeting and why I made the decision that I did, which I stand by. I've also asked in the minutes that the minutes reflect that that meeting was closed without a motion to adjourn. So if I need to answer to anyone, then I will, okay? So on the advice of the council, I will take a motion to adjourn the last meeting so that we can start this new meeting.
That has to be an item added to the agenda properly in order to close that previous meeting. You just can't make a motion because that's not on the agenda. It's not an item.
You've never had a motion to close the meeting or anything?
We've never had a meeting ended when we had it before. But everybody get upset when things were being bothered and that one here's gonna get in their feelings and just jump up and leave. So in order to close that meeting, you gotta open it back up.
Okay, so at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn the last meeting?
You cannot do that.
Motion to adjourn a meeting, uh, July 24th, 2025?
It has to be on the agenda to do that. You just can't do something, just call it out the wind and say, "We'll do that." That's not an agenda item.
But none of this on her agenda.
Right, but I didn't adjourn.
Right.
So we have a motion right now for Ms. Houston to adjourn.
No, we're, we're, you're not, you're not adjourned in this current meeting.
Okay, hold on just one second. I let you speak and I didn't interrupt you, okay? Again, if we're not going to talk about the entire reason I made my decision, no, no, no. Hold on, hold on, just one second.
Please extend the playground over. Because there's enough, there's enough ground out there by the basketball courts to do that. And to pay that kind of money too, four hundred thousand dollars, to me, I'm just gonna tell you, it's not worth four hundred thousand dollars what you all investing down there from what I've seen. Because the property always supposedly belonged to the city. And that's not four hundred thousand dollars of equipment, and it's not gonna be four hundred thousand dollars of work, in my opinion. Thank you.
So, I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, before, let me just say the four hundred thousand dollars is split between two parks.
That's what I wanted to say.
Between what, that's two hundred?
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the fairgrounds park, and two hundred and forty thousand.
How much was it, what's that around park?
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay. According, I have a copy. So, in this contract, that mean you all put all the, all the, uh, parks into one contract. But this one says four hundred, uh, fifteen thousand, five hundred seventy dollars.
It's one project.
That's for the, every, that's all of them combined together.
So, the grand project.
Okay, so how much was you spending?
Hold up, can you, let me ask.
Okay.
Okay. You have all the numbers. The grand project is the fairgrounds park and the city park combined.
Okay, so how much you spend on fairground?
A hundred and sixty thousand.
A hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, so thank you.
Councilman Wells.
Well, what my, my concern with the park is that there was no consultation from anyone at District Five. None. It wasn't, it wasn't me as a city council person. The project, Ms. Lewis did it. There was no consultation with the constituents or the city council member that represented District Five. So, so, and, and the reason why it's being put, the way it's being put, and, and put out there now, because all of it's gonna be used as a campaign propaganda. So, that's what's going on. So, what we should do, I'm a coach, and with doing recreation, I would get with other individuals about a better location, about some of the things that we can have, what should be out there. I was even against them taking the fencing out in the first place. I said, "Why would we take fencing out of a park where kids gonna be playing?" So, because the opinion came in so high from this one particular company, they said, "We'll take the fencing out, and then the city still add seventeen thousand dollars to it." So, that there's no consultation with individuals when things are going forward.
So, I'm not sure how, uh, campaigning came to this, this being, uh, this grant was written in.
I, I will see it later.
In twenty twenty-two. So, was there anyone else that had any comments on this particular subject? Any more couple of comments? I'm sorry, couple of comments on the agenda we did have. Anyone have any public comments on the agenda? Okay, let's move down to approval of the minutes of the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
One thing messed up down there, which says motion to approve the license issued by Joe Cooper and the Country Board of Foods. Says Councilman Houston did it, and then she seconded it. She, I know she did second it, she made the motion.
Is that on the second page? All right. So, Gerald, you see that on the first page? Six, paragraph.
Which one down?
First page of the minutes, paragraph six. We have Houston. Seconding, motioning as second.
Yeah.
Still need to go back and look at his notes to see who the, uh. Wait, a few seconds. So, was Houston, Miss Scott? Uh, number, paragraph number six, three, there, yeah. Okay, wait, hang on just a second. Anything else, Mrs. Scott, Miss Houston, you have any changes?
No, that was one I, I noticed.
Miss Harris? Miss Day?
Okay, the prayer was done by Mayor Hoover, and downward has, uh, Harris saying, "Yes, she was, she wasn't here."
Yeah, I, I noticed that at the last.
Okay, Gerald, you make that change?
Yeah, I'll make that correction.
Councilman Wells? All right, so you got all the corrections, Gerald? So, um, entertain a motion to adopt the, or approve the minutes with the necessary changes. Hold on just one second, Miss Day.
Did somebody?
Hold on just one second. Here we have the motion by Mr. Scott, no, I'm sorry, who's second? Miss Day?
Who?
Day. Motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mrs. Day, and now we have a question for, by Mrs. Day.
I have a voice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In the event, the meeting that was not ended properly, and you all are voting on, and you all are voting on saying the minutes was correct, how do you go back and correct that?
We're gonna have to go back, uh, whatever body tells us that we did it wrong, then we'll have to go back and, and, uh, correct those things.
So, that means this meeting won't be constituted as a real meeting, correct?
Yes. So, what, what body are we gonna seek that opinion from? She said, "What, he said, whatever body tells it correct." So, what body are we gonna seek an opinion from?
So, I'm working off the, the advice of the attorney. You wouldn't want to brought it up. So, if you have someone.
And the attorney also stated.
If you have someone that you wanna go to, you made it a part of the records and everything, so, the minutes, so if you feel like there was something that was done wrong, hold on, and you take it to another level or body or whatever it is that you do. Again, for me, I'm working on the advice of the attorney.
The attorney also stated that we should come back and adjourn it. So, what I would do as the interim mayor, okay? Because you're gonna be more than violation if it happens, okay? So, I would ask the attorney to seek an attorney general's opinion to make sure that you don't get the rest of us in trouble, unless you all don't care about that. Because, uh, I'm not gonna let you get me in trouble. So, I would, we would direct the attorney, hopefully she'll do this thing, and ask her to request attorney general's opinion to see what's a necessary correction to make when a meeting wasn't properly adjourned second. That should be something she wanna know, as the interim mayor, not just for me.
When you're acting under the advice of the attorney, you are protected. So.
No, you're not protected. No, one thing the legislature already told me. I asked the question, and she told Miss Day that she can properly, uh, say reconsider something. He said reconsider has to happen within that meeting. He said, "That was incorrect." He said, "But if that's what your attorney told you, you ought to correct that." So, the attorney has told us several things that has not been right. So, now you all can continue to say on the advice of attorney, and, and use that as a cover. So, I would ask the attorney to make sure she isn't declared to request attorney general's opinion. That should be no problem.
Councilman Wells, you, you, you don't have to ask the attorney, attorney to do an attorney general's opinion, as long as you make it on record, and you stated, stating on record that you want an attorney general's opinion, everything stops there, and you take that, that matter to the attorney general's office. As, as long as you have your minutes on file, and everything is, is recorded in those minutes, and we can take it to the attorney general's office.
We have proper motion and a second to approve the minutes with the necessary corrections. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Pastor Blessing, being to move a boarding house and transitional living.
Pardon me. My name is Blessing, Ms. Walton, and, uh, everybody call me Blessing, really. I represent Blessings for your Ministries International, and I came before you today to request permission um, to start transitional living for formerly incarcerated women, or emergency housing for displaced individuals. And on the safe property, we want to have a community facility for a common area. And, um, we will have counseling, mentorship, life skills training, job readiness training, spiritual support, and wraparound services to help residents integrate, back into the society and become self-sufficient. And this community resource hub will also be open to, um, local residents. And we understand zoning, because, um, so we went from door to door in the direct environment around, uh, that property, and we had very positive, uh, response. And, um, we documented, uh, the contact information. So, we have, uh, names, addresses, phone numbers, and signatures from those who were at home. We, I've been there probably three or four times. And I went to the, the chief of police, and he said, uh, he would support, and his concern was what the, the neighborhood would, would, uh, think about that. And, um, this community facility would be on eight sixteen West Craig Street, block five and six. And, um, it consists out of, we want to place like five, um, manufactured units. And those, um, units, uh, consist out of five sections like bed, bath, and kitchen area. And, um, and the community facility is also, um, like a manufactured, um, building, so everything will be manufactured. Yes, and our old church, uh, church building is still there. So, if I do get the permission to do this, then we have to demolish that building.
And I wanna go on record to say that I was in support of the idea, but the area, I wasn't, right? That's what I said. I, I would support the idea of what you're trying to do, but for is, the area that it's in, I didn't support that. I don't.
I'm sorry that I misunderstood, because I have it on the text message.
No.
That you said.
Read the text message in.
You were concerned about, uh.
Read the text message.
The neighbors.
Yeah, okay, read it.
So, what, just to, so that everyone is clear, you want to do a boarding house transitional living for, hit, tell me the, what type of individuals again?
For formerly incarcerated women.
Formerly incarcerated women?
Yes.
This is in a residential area?
This is a residential area, yes.
And you said you've gone around, you've asked your, the neighbors and such?
Yes.
So, everybody understands that. Mr. Scott, you have any questions?
Tell me the address.
Eight sixteen West Craig Street, block five and six. I'm sorry, I missed the numbers.
Eight sixteen.
It's on the corner of Fourth and, and Craig, right down by the old junior high school at. That's where it's at. And like I say, it's a zoning area. I, I don't know how commercial would go there, because I don't know who the church, can, can you tell us whether a church consider it as commercial? It's not, right? I don't know. It's a religious building. It's not commercial. Am I right? I'm, I'm.
You're right.
You know, I'm.
Faith, faith.
So, I don't know. That's why I see, I see it's commercial.
Mr. Scott, did you have any other questions? Miss Houston?
No.
Just being clear about what it is. Miss Harris?
Well, I have talked to several of the, uh, neighbors and everybody that's against it that I've talked to. Who I have here, Mrs. Jackson, and, uh, and I have some that's ready to, to a petition to keep that house there. When you create an area where his senior citizens, widows, act, it's just not a place where they want that. Especially right in front of, verbally in front of their homes.
So, it's okay, you don't have to.
Yeah. Okay, because, uh.
It's here. Go ahead.
I have some of the residents here. I have some of the residents here who want to vote their opinion on that.
Everyone, if we could, if we could just.
Settle down for a minute.
Just for a moment. Miss Day, anything else?
Like, for now, yes.
She has a question back there.
Okay, hold on just a second. Councilman Wells?
Okay, this will be my concern, sister. Everyone is, uh, afraid of the facility being there. Do you have any type of security or safety measures that you would have in place that would try to alleviate some of the concerns that the community members may have for the facility?
Yes, sir. Um, the moment that I would get permission, that you will make sure that it is, it's secure.
So, if there, any kind of way that, uh, you could get those to the council, to the community, so that they wouldn't be in opposition or something of that sort? Because their concern is to put them on, on the safety, or something of that sort. So, if you have something that could probably address their concern, that as a council, we could probably could support it, but we gotta look at the safety concerns first. So, if you could come back with something to address the safety concern, or try to, probably make this, this should be more, uh, in favor of it, or something of that sort.
Yes, I, I do understand. And, um, as I said also, um, let me see, my English is not always so good, but, um, let me see, um, how do you say that again? Uh, yeah, for the displaced individuals, because we have like two different projects that we really would like to do. And this was our, our, our passion, because I was a, a chaplain at, uh, at the facility, and I had a different approach, and it really worked. So, that was my passion. But for those people that are disadvantaged, and, you know, with everything that happens now, where people losing their home. So, that is, uh, so if that is not a possibility, I will go around.
What I'm saying is, I, I admire you going to do that.
Yes.
The concern seems to be that there's safety factors. So, what are your measures that you have in place for our safety to address those concerns that constituents may have?
Yeah.
So, that, that may be something they will look at addressing. Because right now, it seems like the community is not for it, because they feel that they want to be safe. So, if you could try to address the safety concerns, it may be, constituents may be more open to receive, I don't know if it is or not, but just trying to, they're trying to address the safety concerns that they may have.
Okay, and if it would be, if it wouldn't be, um, like, ex, uh, inmates, then the problem wouldn't be there.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, whether or not I'm saying, from what I'm hearing, it seems there's a safety factor that would, that would.
Okay, yeah.
So, next to not, yeah, tonight, you're just presenting this.
Yes, yes.
And this is why I wanted you to come, because I wanted you to hear what the council had to say. And I think we have some neighbors in, in the, the neighborhoods, all right? And, and Pastor Blessing, I think it would be really good for you to listen to what somebody in the neighborhood has to say.
Yes.
So that you have, you know, all of the information.
Yes, ma'am. And what I wanted to say also, that's why I was coming to you, you know, with information, because we went from door to door. So, I was, yeah, surprised to hear it.
And, and see, the reason why I'm saying it, because I know, we, we have prison, the largest juvenile prison in the United States, was built in the neighborhood. You understand? In the same neighborhood. And you had individuals that, that said they was concerned, the council didn't listen to them. So, that prison was built there and it's still there. So, I'm saying, if you just possibly come back and try to address some safety concern, it maybe things can move forward. Good, good, number.
All right. So, but before you go, there's some folks in the audience who would like to say, and I think it's really important for you to hear what everybody has to say.
Yes.
So that when you go back and address whatever it is, and come back, you know, and you can talk about those different things.
Um, let me say this. It's not just safety for me, and I'm saying this as a person who had to move away from my childhood home, it's something that was very, it was, put to us, it was very benign. I was a child, and wound up doing very much harm to our community. And so, I had to move my mother and myself out of that neighborhood. Uh, it's not just safety, safety is an issue, but it takes down the value of people's homes. It's a lot of issues with that. That's a residential neighborhood, and as an African American, I know in our neighborhoods, we tend to, anything goes. Um, but it, it shouldn't, because we need to protect our neighborhoods. And it's nothing personal, because I don't know you. And the concept is great, but it needs to be in a more commercial area. It doesn't need to be in a residential area. So, safety is one issue, but again, you have the impact on your, um, home values, all of that takes place. So, I just don't think that, anything like that, other than homes, needs to be in those residential neighborhoods.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, I'm gonna let the, the neighbor, and then I'll have to go. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
My question is, how many doors, how far down did you go knocking on doors? Because I don't recall anybody knocking on my door. I'm right in the neighborhood.
Yes, uh, we went, um, like, we went around, um, I don't know, obviously Fifth Street, um, I have to stop there. And not everybody was home either, and I put that down too, when somebody wasn't home. I went down three times. And, um, how do you call that? The direct area around.
I know close to the direct area, but I don't recall, I never seen.
What is your address?
Eleven twelve, and I never seen anybody on my camera board as that matter. Uh, the next thing, like they said before, and I hate to, you know, repeat, but we already have the prison in that area. We have a lot of elderly people, single people in that area, and the inmates, or those that are released from prison, you have a certain type of people that you're going to have in that area?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we will not be able to, um, you know, take people in with addictions. So, we would have, um, like, uh, we would refer those to, you know, different facilities. And, um, my concern is that, you know, there's nothing like that here in the city of Tallulah. And when they come out, they just be in, in, in your, in the area, but maybe just in one of those, uh, how do you say that? Uh, apartments. And you don't know. And now, it's, they are together, they, they going to be trained, they going to be, their minds going to be transformed by the teaching. Break the vicious cycle. You're going to, so to, to, uh, show them how to know, have these life skills that are so important. They don't have hope, they don't have, some don't have family. You see, so now, my idea was to bring them together, then you know where they are, that's one. And to, to encourage them, teach them, train them, so that they go back in the society, and because they keep falling back, that's the whole idea.
Well, you have some that are prisoner, like, um, myself and Mr. Barbara, we used to work at a prison before. Juvenile facility, the one that they were talking about, and then they changed it over to an adult facility. Um, in the frame of mind, you know, a person can put on airs for so long, and they can fool you, me, and the Pope.
Yeah.
But whatever is in that person is gonna come out. They can show you one side, and then it flipped the script. And then who's gonna be on the end of receiving that? Uh, and I know, uh, Mr. Wells, I believe you mentioned, are you gonna fence this area around? Are these people are gonna have, um, uh, freedom to just go here and there at a certain time and back?
I will do anything that is necessary, and, um, to keep the neighborhood safe, because it is about keeping, uh, our city of Tallulah safe, and to train these individuals to do better. And the beauty of what you just said, they can fool everybody. That's why the spirituality is coming in. I'm also a pastor. You don't see places anymore where they cast out demons or what they, you see?
Pastor Blessing, then we're gonna move along, okay, so that we can make sure we get to everything. Mr. Wilson?
Oh, I have several properties in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Uh, I'm for what's right for the city. And not once have I heard anyone on the council, uh, have volunteered to save, uh, Pastor Blessings. How can I show you other properties that will accommodate, uh, what you're looking for? Uh, and I think that's the missing piece here with the city. Uh, we should be accommodative, uh, to those that want to bring businesses, that want to, uh, uh, exercise the, the tax dollars in the city. Uh, am I for in that particular neighborhood? I grew up in the neighborhood. Uh, and I, I don't think I will be for that in the neighborhood, because there are other things that we could possibly do. But what I am for, uh, and I'll do it as a courtesy to you, to help you find, uh, the building that you need, because everybody, everybody in this room has done something, and that needs a second chance of something. So, I can't judge whomever that wants to be a part of the program. There are good programs out there, and when no, when somebody has gone and served a, 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 a sentence of, of, of a long period of time, or even a short period of time, we don't know what those individuals are. You can be a, a diehard Christian and full of the devil. So, we can't, we can't judge people by what we assume they are. So, you're creating jobs for our city, I'm all for it, if you're creating jobs. And that's what all, each council member should, should think about. Job creation for our city, putting people to work to have a better life in our city.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, Pastor Blessing, when she did come, um, we did talk about another location, um, but she was very adamant that they wanted to use the location that they had. So, Mr. Wilson has said that he would help you.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful, and I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
My name is London.
I'm sorry.
My name is London Bryant, and I agree with, uh, it's, it's a good idea, but the wrong spot. I'm serious. It's, it's, I'm, I'm this side of town, just beyond, on the black side of town, everything goes over there. Letting go of all that, but it's time I forget stuff. If they ever had, if they had orders, everything, we would be, we would be, we would miss this, we, me and now, but it's a nice idea, but, and it found, like you say, a little place to put it in.
I understand. It is not that I have to, it is just, you know, I'm concerned also about everybody's work, because that's what I say.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta give that idea one like that. If the council, if the city can find a, this is a spot, we have a judicated property, something, just donate whatever, whatever we, we doing, we just put together, and need it done for the best of the, the town.
Yeah.
It's my opinion now, but that's why, that's why I think it should be, it's time off, Tallulah, we be on the move. Obviously, it's so, it's so messed up now. My sister came home from my husband's funeral back then, I think about a month ago, and she said, "What happened to Tallulah?" And if I'm Tallulah, it's not good. Yeah, we all got that. So, guess what? Even the citizen, patrol, everybody, for fear of, of the board. It's time off for changing Tallulah. It's just time off for, we work against each other, work together.
Work together, that's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank y'all so much. All right, and so Pastor Blessing, whenever you wanna come back before the, uh, the council, call me, let me know, and, um, we'll get you on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is number seven, consideration and approval to begin the process of donation of adjudicated property to the Madison Parish Police Jury, or the Madison Parish Library. I thought Mr. Bridgewater, Bridgewater is here. So, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Bridgewater come forward, kinda tell you, um, what they are wanting to do, and then we will get, um, comments from all of the council members, and then we'll, um, get comments from the audience as well. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening to everybody. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I stand, uh, on behalf of the Madison Parish Library. Uh, I chair the library, uh, board, and what we would like to do is to develop that area, uh, that would include adjudicated property that's adjacent to the library, that probably now is in the city's inventory. And what we would like to do is basically acquire that, that, that property to the parish to be used for library use.
Let me interrupt you. So, everybody knows where he's talking about. There is a, uh, two-story older white home right next to the library. Um, it's, that property is adjudicated to the city. Um, they are looking to see if we can donate that property to the library. What they wanna do is go in, demolish it, clean it all off, and make it into a parking lot.
And I do, uh, have members of the library board, as well as the library director, uh, uh, members here tonight. And we would really, uh, uh, encourage the city to consider, uh, uh, doing this for the library, because of what it would do to that area. Uh, and we could begin the process. I do know that, uh, it, there may be some legal, uh, uh, costs. Uh, but the library is, is, is willing to basically take care of those legal causes, uh, and it will be good for the city ultimately.
Have you spoken to the police jury about this? We had talked with, uh, Ms. Sanders today. Um, she knew about it from being on the library staff. Have you guys gone to report the police jury to make sure they're okay with this whole thing?
Ms. Sanders is, is, uh, our, uh, uh, one of the, uh, board members. Uh, just no voting power for the board members. Uh, they are aware, uh, uh, of it, and we, we can basically, uh, deal with the parish as well. I do want to basically know that, uh, the city will be in favor of us, basically, uh, dump, big, in favor of donating to the parish, and we will take care of, uh, the police jury.
Um, from the council, um, District One, do you have any questions, concerns?
District One was, you, y'all, we donate, y'all clean it up, and then you make the parking lot for them?
We would do all of that. We would remove the house. The house right now, really, it is a threat to, uh, the library, as well as a threat to, uh, the community. Uh, and one of the things that, uh, we would do first, we would move that. Uh, so, all of that will be, will be done by.
Anything to improve the look?
That's correct.
Just that, of course, you know, if adjudicated, what about if the previous owner come back and tried to redeem it, you know, how would that affect that? You know, if adjudicated, what about if the previous owner come back and tried to redeem it, you know, how would that affect that stuff?
So I'm gonna let the attorney, because we talked about that.
So, um, what got me difficult first, because we're well outside of, of the three-year period, this has been adjudicated to the city for quite some time. Um, typically, there is a process that you need to follow, and we're entitled to tax adjudicated properties. And if the city elected to do this, we could go one or two routes, um, you know, there's an offer for them to do all of the legal work, okay? On the, on the library, and I expect the parish side. Um, there could be, uh, effectively a quit claim, or a cooperative endeavor agreement, and allow them to do all of the purity work on the very end, or that's something we could collectively work to do together on the front end, and allow them to take the expense. Um, I would recommend we work with Lamats and that process to make sure that we get it done correctly. Uh, but this has been tax adjudicated to the city since, I believe, nineteen ninety, or thereabout, so.
Councilwoman?
Well, that would be my concern, is legally, the city can't donate property to anyone.
You can.
Unless, 'cause, uh, and I'm not against what's, I really think about it, but I also have legal legality, because according to Louisiana Constitution, Article seven, subsection fourteen, it says that there's prohibited uses from donations loaned or placed in public credit. It says prohibited uses in section eight, except if otherwise provided by this constitution, the funds created property are things of value of the state or any political subdivision, shall not be loaned, placed, or donated to or for any person, association, corporation, or its public or private, except if otherwise provided in this section. Neither the state nor political subdivision shall subscribe to, to, or purchase the stock of a corporation or association or any identified. And the part that bring out, just said, we can't donate it. Unless you go through, when you mentioned earlier about a cooperative endeavor agreement, so we would have to do better, a cooperative endeavor agreement, so we just can't donate, legally, you can't donate taxpayers' property.
Now, other consideration could be given, like for the cleanup and things like that, um?
You can't, you can't, you can't give away public property.
And I'm not suggesting.
You can enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement to allow them to, they're gonna clean up and utilize it, you can't, but you can't give it away, you can't donate it away.
Can you say, sell it to the?
Hold on, Mr. Bridgewater. Um, so Louisiana Rule, um, Rev. statute forty-seven, twenty-two oh five, talks about donation of adjudicated property. The governing body of a political subdivision made by ordinance allow the donation of any identified adjudicated property to any person to the extent allowed, allowed by the Louisiana Constitution. So what would either happen, we would either need to do it by ordinance, or in another manner. There is a pathway to get it done.
We, we, I, I'm not against it, okay? Read the last part of what you said, about the Constitution. It comes back to your ordinance does not supersede the Constitution. So even when you go to the ordinance, the state law says you can't donate it, what we can do is enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement in order for the project to still go forward. So I'm saying that that's the way we can go forward, a cooperative endeavor agreement.
This is, this is the beginning, uh, this is the end of the process.
Right, tonight is just for us to approve, us beginning the process, um. Yeah, that's, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a win-win, it's a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll definitely get there, and if that's the correct way to go, then that's the correct way to go. And what, what we wanna do is make sure that you get it cleaned up, we get a nice new parking lot back there, and it, you know, enhances that area. So, um, Mr. Wilson?
I would like to know, why, why do we have to wait until we get, uh, uh, Mr. Bridgewater or any other, uh, individual that's interested in adjudicated property to clean it up? That's something that we should be doing with properties that we own ourselves. We shouldn't have to have an eyesore there to, to, for someone to wait in order to buy it, to clean it up. That's, that's a main issue, a real big issue with, with our street department. I'm not saying our street department is a bad street department, but we have to put more monies in their bu- budget in order to make these things happen. If we own the property, we should be cleaning the property, period. We shouldn't have vines growing up on a, on a house, and, uh, kids going to, uh, the library, and, and parents are scared that some jump out of the, out of, out of the bushes on, on their child. We shouldn't have to do that. We can't keep doing it this way.
So our street department has been very busy cleaning up properties around town. I think we've probably done over twenty, over the last three or four months, so, um, definitely, there's a lot to do. Definitely, there's a lot more to do, um, but we definitely appreciate this opportunity, and, uh, we, I think we maybe will take a motion to approve the process of beginning to, how to do a cooperative endeavor agreement, um, or an ordinance, whichever way we go, um, for this adjudicated property to the jury. So I entertain a motion to that effect. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Scott, we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Day. Uh, Vivian? Oh, okay, thank you, by Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris, Miss Houston. Was there any other questions or concerns by the council before we move to the vote?
So we consider the cooperative endeavor agreement?
Yeah, we're gonna work with Lamats and, you know, figure out exactly the correct way to go. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That agreement can be settled as a matter of just us getting together, to say, this is what we're gonna do, and if we sign it, we'll go on tomorrow.
Okay, but we don't have a cooperative endeavor agreement on the agenda.
That property, if it's going that way, wouldn't it belong to, still belong to the city?
Yes, it would still belong to the city, but we, we, we don't.
So what we're doing now is just voting to begin the process. We're gonna look into it, make sure that we're doing this absolutely correct, okay? We are, right, determine our options. We have a proper motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, um, out of the wastewater treatment plant, there are a number of old aerators, there are probably about fifteen of them. Typically, in the past, when we have old cars or those sorts of things, we declared them, uh, surplus. Um, I've spoken with the attorney today, and we're gonna try and start doing that in a, a different manner, so that we have a resolution done for all, um, surplus property. So what I'd like to do, you all, is to table this item, uh, to come back, put a resolution together, work with Lamats on helping us, um, get these items out there, there's, like I said, about fifteen of them, they're pretty heavy. I think they're all made out of steel, or metal, or whatever the case may be, so there may be an opportunity to, um, maybe get some money off of them.
Okay, no, no, I, I, I just wanted to ring the process out with my question.
So, um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to table this item until, um, we come back with the resolution.
Before, before we table this item, I'd like to speak. I'm trying to figure out, since we have no control over anything we water, or the water plant right now, how can we sell the areas of surplus?
Okay, so this is the wastewater tube.
Okay. Okay, so my, my concern is, we've missed these areas, so when are we gonna put something on the agenda about us taking action to fix, renovate our water system? Because we, we don't have nothing on our agenda, 'cause it's gonna come back to us. So when are we gonna start putting things into place for us to start getting our water plant back in the line?
Okay, so right now, we're talking about this item for areas out at the wastewater treatment plant, and I'm talking about water, so.
Nonsense.
So I'll entertain a motion to table this item, and a motion to table, second. Proper motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the termination of Officer Michael Stewart. Chief?
Well, each council member have a couple of my recommendation, I'm quite sure you guys read it, that's where I stand, so that's what I recommend, y'all vote.
And your policy in the, the police department is, after someone is terminated, they have up to ten days to say whether or not they want a hearing, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, did we receive anything from Mr. Stewart?
I haven't seen anything in writing.
Councilman, I'm Councilman Scott. Any questions? Ms. Houston? Ms. Harris? Ms. Day? Councilman Wells?
Yes. A- after reading this letter, and I'm sure every council member read this letter, has this officer had any other?
Several more, sir.
They learned that.
Several more, okay, listen.
Chief, so let me, I'll just give you one second.
Okay.
So chief, what I would like is, if someone has the floor, if you would allow them to go ahead and finish, and then I'll give you an opportunity to respond, so that we're not all over.
Okay, now, back to what I was saying, I, I wish the attorney, Jason, finished.
Okay, and, and thank you, um, because I think we're sort of delving more into.
I said individual, I said individual.
Okay, well, we already know who the individual is, it's already listed. So I think we're starting to go a little bit more into their personnel history than we should. Right now, what we're talking about is the term, termination, and if you have any questions about it.
Yes, because I have questions about how it happened. And, and, and when, when we have an individual that we're trying to terminate, as it's me, I'm a firm believer, in giving another individual opportunity to speak, and based upon the one letter that we have in our packet, okay? This letter does not say anything about an individual, I, I can walk away from you if I want to. If you're talking to me, and I do not like what you're saying to me, I have the right to walk away. And if you're saying something that I do not agree with, I can say whatever to you. That's freedom of speech, that's not grounds for termination. See, I can't get mad 'cause somebody don't understand there. Actually, no, 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 you know, I can't get mad because according to the letter for termination, see, all of that is irrelevant. According to what we have in our packet, it says an individual walked away, threw their hands up, and stated whatever in response to your insubordinate actions. I stated, "You do not walk away from me when I'm talking to you." As an individual, if I'm in a heated conversation, we tell our officers, they should be trained to learn.
Sorry, I can't even, what, what are you saying, Ms. Harris?
Oh, I, she said he had some more.
Okay, all right, you asked me, could I? Okay, hold on, guys. Mr. Wells has.
Right now, we in violation. It was not in our packet, it cannot be brought up now, cannot. So what, I'm sorry, okay, so we can't do that. So whatever is gonna be grounds for termination should be included in the packet. So there's nothing can be brought now, but according to the letter that we have, notice of termination, it's saying he walked away, threw his hands in the wa- in the air, and said, "Well, I told you, can't, uh, you continue to walk away, throw your hands in the air, up again, and shouted whatever. At the point I stated, you can go home for the rest of the night. You continue to disrespectfully walk away, throw your hands up, and again shouted whatever. I then stated, you are fired, turning all city property." Now, what we have to train our officers to do, if there's a hostile situation, they have to defuse the situation. So if you're talking to me, and you're hollering at me or whatever, I'm gonna walk away, 'cause it's not within a fight. So my walking away and saying whatever is actually me being a peacemaker. Because two mountains may never meet, but two men will. And men are not gonna allow no other man to talk to me crazy. So now, because I walk away and throw my hands up and say whatever, because I'm quite sure it was more said than just this here. I ain't crazy. Nobody's gonna walk away and say whatever, 'cause you telling me to come and talk to you. Now, I'll say whatever, you come and holler, it cuts me out. If you talking to me like a child, I'm gonna tell you, say, "Walk away." Now, this is what you all gotta understand as a council, just because the chief recommend termination, you do not have to go with it. The law according to, where is it at? Make sure I got it. The Supreme Court case, an opinion states that the chief's recommendation is only advice that you can take, or you can reject, and we can also render our own punishment. So according to the letter that we have in our packet, there's nothing else that can be brought up, 'cause it's not in our packet, nothing else. If you do that, then you violate due process. Okay, so according to this letter, this not grounds for the, for termination. Actually, the man should be committed by walking away from a hostile situation. Because you got a group of folks, and we, we got kids, a people that's out in the community hollering, and fighting, and hollering, fussing each other. And the police tell them to stop. And they hollering and fussing, and start fighting. And before, before the fight starts, I'm sorry, we tell them to, to disperse, or move away. And they keep hollering, and the first thing we're gonna tell them is, "I told you to disperse, because it was hostile. Let's separate the, the angry parties."
Should we be doing this in the executive session and not?
Anytime you're discussing personnel, you're right.
Hold on, hold on, guys, hold on, okay?
My, my, my concern is the fact that there's always a recommendation for termination when somebody object to the chief's actions. So according to the letter that's given to us, I don't think that there's grounds, persons, grounds for termination.
Okay, so Mr. Wells is saying he does not believe that there is grounds for termination. We have recommendation from the chief for termination on this matter, and that is what you guys are looking at. Is there a motion to approve this?
So you're gonna do a vote?
In the Supreme Court case of Grant versus Timidow, it said, it was overruled, it said the council has the authority to render their own punishment. And, and one thing we had this discussion before, when an individual is terminated, the chief can't terminate you. He can't, he can only make recommendations of termination, all right? And according to this letter, the letter, letter for recommendation was written on July eleventh. And, uh, and on July at eleven. And I'm trying to see how, the, the incident happened at eleven-ten at night, so was the letter written the same night it happened? Eleven-ten, and, and, and then at eleven-ten, the letter was written at, on this, in the, in the, the incident happened at eleven-ten, on July eleventh, which means that it is kinda hard for me to believe that this stuff happened after the violation of the curfew. What time is the curfew going to effect?
You smart, you tell me.
Eleven o'clock, very smart.
All right.
At, at eleven o'clock, which means after the curfew, this was happening at exactly eleven o'clock. Then I go and tell, and I have a confrontation with a, a situation with an individual, and I type up a letter in ten minutes? So how long did the sit- the, the situation between the chief and the officer happen?
Okay, so I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, you are against this recommendation for termination?
Yes, because we can also render another disciplinary action.
All right, so that's your opinion, you giving it, I think I'm giving.
Yes, so my only other thing is, we can make a recommendation of suspending the individual, we'll pay for a couple of days.
Can you go on the, up the phone?
Counsel, you need to be mindful. This letter is not grounds for termination.
Okay, this, this, okay, so, Mr. Wells, are you done, sir?
True.
Okay, he's made it clear how he feels on this particular item.
Understood.
Right, the agenda item is to approve termination of Michael Stewart based upon the chief's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the termination?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Chief, has Mr. Stewart reached out to you, or has he reached out to about getting his job back?
No, yet.
Has he reached out to you, Mr. Wells, about him?
See, see, that, 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 that question is totally, I'm telling you why that question is bogus to me. Tell you why, I'm telling you why, I'm telling you why.
You had your chances.
No, no, well, hold on.
Because I. Only part of that statement, because I asked for us to institute a grievance policy, and we have not done that.
I have a grievance policy.
The chief.
In my department, I have a grievance policy. See, what you, I have to say stuff, okay, man.
The only one that has a grievance policy, because if I have an issue with the chief, I shouldn't be, I should not have to go talk to the chief about my grievance. That's why the, the Constitution and Rob, I mean, uh, Larson Act says that we have the right to hire and fire. We should, all the ones we can't intervene with is the mayor. But with the chief, we should have a grievance policy in effect, where the individual has a problem with the chief or anybody else in the city, say, with the police department, they should be able to come to a neutral party, going to the chief and his. they should be able to come to a neutral party, going to the chief and his assistant, it's not a grievous policy.
The, uh, councilman, the councilwoman Houston just asked, uh, did the gentleman come to the chief or the interim mayor? Uh, that means that the chief had already made his decision to fire. Uh, what he should have done was put the, uh, the individual on administrative leave.
No, 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 that ain't what the law states. Okay, okay.
Still no comments, go ahead, sir.
The, uh, he should have put the, regardless of what the law states, I'd go with what the, uh, the council, the councilman just said, uh, because I believe that his reading and, uh, and his knowledge of, of the law is impeccable, uh, and that's my opinion. So, um, just firing someone and ask, asking for your job back, it's, that's, that's not what it says, and I've read it as well. So why...
What you mean?
Chief, just let him, please have a business.
Why would an individual have to come and ask for his job back? Secondly, the, this is a matter that should have been, uh, been discussed in, in the, the, uh, back room there, not in front of the public, uh, because this, this young man's business is all out, uh, how you guys are discussing that? And I, I would have thought interim mayor that you would have had, you would have done this in the correct manner with your experience in running meetings. Uh, so therefore, I think we in violation of the law having a discussion, uh, of someone's employment, uh, in open, in this open meeting. So, and there is a law that says that we shouldn't be doing this type of behavior in an open meeting, so...
Alright, so...
One more question, I just thought about it. The Larson Act states that, after, after the chief has made a determination to fire an individual, it says at the first special or regular meeting, it has to be brought before the council. So according to his letter, you gotta be careful, legally, I'm just, I'm ignoring from my net. He made a determination on July eleventh, that he's gonna terminate that individual. So we had a special meeting on July the seventeenth, which we discussed this appointment of the interim mayor, which I know you have to let. But we also had a regular meeting on July twenty-fourth, which means according to the law, maybe reading wrong, but it says after he has made his determination that he's gonna terminate the employee, it says the first special or regular meeting is supposed to come before the council. So he made it on July eleventh, according to the notice of termination. We've had a special meeting on the seventeenth and a regular meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Mayor, Mayor, the Bill of Rights also state, Police Bill of Rights also state that you have a ten day process, right? So, that's not counting weekends. So if we'd have did it then, his due process would have been violated. So, Wells, what you do is like I said, you go free limited attack on the police department trying to undermine my authority, and you've been doing it for a while. Okay, I'm not making it personal, but this is what he told me. This is not making it personal, but...
So you feel as if your timing is correct?
Oh yeah, I know it's correct. The thing is, he has no, let me say this, he has no voice if he don't appeal. And that's the bottom line, that's the bottom line.
That, that, that's not legal, no. That's not legal, and the, the police bill of rights do not supersede law. That's what we gotta understand.
Tell me what the police bill of rights say.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do.
No, no, no.
I've given everybody an ample opportunity to say how they're gonna say it.
The chief made a, oh, Tori, hold on, don't get personal. The chief has made the assertion that the police bill of rights supersede state law, and it does not.
Mayor, could I say one more thing?
The state law stays whenever the chief has made a determination.
What we're gonna do at this time is act on this action. Okay, we're gonna act on this action. Is there a motion to approve the termination of Officer Stewart?
He just made a motion.
Second, proper motion, and second, we have a proper motion by Mr. Scott.
He had to get permission from Houston.
And a second by Ms. Houston. Girl, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Scott? Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Wells?
No.
Motion's here.
I hope we wait them long for a motion on another item that we don't like.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Section A report.
City, to the honorable mayor, chief police, uh, council members, city attorneys, and our public. Section A, like to submit, uh, the agency's number of participants. Uh, we currently have fifty-four participants out of the council's sixty-three. That was as of, uh, July thirtieth, and at this time, applications are not being accepted. Vouchers are not being entered. Uh, the reason being would be because of our two-year term, uh, which to lose Section A is experiencing its shortfall in funding. Uh, on July sixteenth, um, a call was conducted with Tracy Johnson-Matt. She is, uh, with the HUD Office of Public and Indian Housing Cost Insurance Program, and we met and discussed, uh, our shortfall funding and ways to try to address reducing costs with our Section A program. I listed, uh, also the monthly cap for each month from March up to present, March through August. And I also included in Section A report from fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, in which was Chester's receipt. That included in Section A.
The cap.
Is the housing assistance payment.
So that's how much we paid out for individuals that have vouchers with us?
Individuals and landlords.
How much was it?
Mayor, can I... Mr. Wells, would you like to see my report? Did you just ask how much?
Thank you, I can have it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give it to you. Okay, um, Council, Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Ms. Brown? Ms. Houston?
No.
Harris?
This, I am.
Just one second, okay? Mr. Day?
No.
Okay, Mr. Wells?
I mean, Mr. Allen, what would you say caused the shortfall that we had with our funding?
Because there's a national factor of forty-four percent reduced across the nation as far as funding. And it affected all of our, um, all of public housing, Section A and public housing.
Was that from federal cuts?
Federal.
So do we have those federal cuts, and anyway, Jennifer, not saying that you're not telling the truth or anything like that. Do, do we have to show how much money we lost from the Section A fund for the shortfall?
We don't have, um, I, that was issued in the February packet. I did, um, I think, if I can recall, the thing that was sent out nationally, I put it in our February's pack, in the, for the February, uh, meeting. So, Section A report.
Is that something that we can get and resend, you know, resend?
Well, definitely.
Is there anything else, Ms. Brown? Anyone, uh, Ms. Day, you had a question?
No, she had a question for me.
It was answered?
It's been answered.
Okay, alright, um, anything else, Ms. Brown?
No.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, uh, or accept, Ms. Brown, Section A report?
Okay. Second.
Proper motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve a resolution to submit an application for the Delta Regional Authority, DRA, State's Economic Development Assistance Program grant and appoint interim mayor Yvonne Lewis to perform duties and administration there with. So the CF grant is a part of DRA. It's typically a grant that you can use on public infrastructure, um, roads and those sorts of things heading to areas of economic development. And so what we would like to do is submit an application for Beach Street, um, heading to Beach Street, um, going towards the medical businesses there, um, the private businesses that we have on that road, and on down Harlem Street and around to Napa. Um, so at this point, the application is due, I think, on the twenty-eighth. Uh, we would need a resolution approved by the council to submit that application, and then we can go forward.
Okay, I, uh...
Hold on, just one second, Mr. Wells. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions? Ms. Houston?
We're submitting this to get another street fixed, you saying?
Yes.
Beach Street?
With Dupont and...
Beach Street. You got any questions? Ms. Harris? Is that Mr. Wells?
Okay, my concern is that whenever you're gonna apply for a grant, it, I understand what you're saying it's gonna be for, but it should be spelled out to us in the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, what the grant is gonna be for. Uh, you're just saying that you, uh, apply for a grant for DRA, the State's Economic Development Assistance Program. Uh, if we're gonna apply for streets, why is it not included in our resolution? Because once we apply for the grant, and you all vote for the resolution, that means it can go towards anything. So if we're gonna apply for a grant, it's gonna be resolution, then I think it should be specific.
So you can't just, uh, do this grant for anything, there are guidelines that you have to go by, okay? And they are basic public infrastructure in stressed counties and isolated areas, transportation infrastructure for the purpose of facilitating economic development in the region, business development with an emphasis on entrepreneurship, or job training, or, uh, employment-related education. So as I said, what we would like to do is use this, you know, we got some bad streets here, so we can use a grant to our advantage to get a street fixed.
I, I understand what it's for, what I'm saying is, if we're gonna do a resolution, resolutions that we're applying for grants has to be specific. We should be stating that I'm gonna be applying to the street grant to upgrade, whatever streets I'm gonna upgrade. If I'm not mistaken, see, this is saying I'm gonna apply for a grant with the State's Economic Development Assistance Program fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, program cycle. So I'm saying if we're gonna apply for the fixing of Beach Street, and that, why wouldn't we say we're applying for a street grant? According to this program. So I think we should table this until it's stated in the resolution. Because the resolution has to be specific and not just vague. So I, I think we should, I, I make a motion that we table it, if we're gonna apply for streets, that we come back and say, "We'll, a resolution will apply for a street grant" from this particular program.
And, um, so I'll just add in there that we are, uh, up against the time limit on this. We can certainly add Beach Street into this resolution, I don't think that it needs to be tabled. I think we can simply add that and go forward with this, uh, this grant opportunity.
Well, see, the, the reason why I'm saying I think we should not come back and just add it verbally, I'm thinking if we're gonna vote it as a council to adopt it tonight, uh, because we, we need, we need to, uh, discuss some other things in a special meeting. So I'm saying that we, we ought to do before we approve a resolution, we should, it should have been specific from the beginning. If you had the intention of, we, uh, we have a Beach Street and other streets you mentioned, that should have been listed in your grant app, in this resolution that you're gonna apply for a street grant. Because now, what it leads me to is that once you all vote on the resolution to approve it, you say, "Well, you know what, I decided I'm gonna do something else instead of those streets." But if I'm gonna do streets, then I will apply it and put that in my grant.
So this, this resolution is actually from DRA. Um, you do not have to put exactly what you want in it, however, we can add that to make sure it's okay. But I do not think that it needs to be tabled tonight, I think we can go ahead and make that.
As a council.
Uh, the, uh, resolution is not for the streets to appoint interim mayor to perform the duties and administration there and there with to do this.
The resolution is to get permission to submit the application and to appoint someone to act as the administrator. So, Mr. Wells, I think it's, I think that you have made it very clear that you would like to add in there so that nothing's gonna change. We certainly can do that.
So you apply for a grant?
I thought I was still talking, I thought I was still talking. Thank you. So, I think what we can do is add in what you said, add in Beach Street so that everybody has what they want with the resolution. I do not think that it needs to be tabled, um, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, sir.
This is what I'm saying, okay, Ms. Day? If we're gonna apply for a grant, and the mayor, interim mayor has stated it's gonna be for streets, then we should be saying on this resolution that she's gonna apply for a grant with the DRA, state execution, apply for a grant. The resolution, we're not just saying she's gonna be appointed to do it. She's gonna be appointed to do something with the appointment. So she says she gonna apply for a grant with them for streets. Because when she apply for a grant, the grant application gonna have to say what it's for. This, a resolution to say this what we're applying for, we'll see that. I believe in, we put stuff in writing, because we, we did a whole lot of stuff in the city that we just say, "We're gonna do this here," then we end up in trouble. So I think we just put stuff detailed in writing, and be specific on what we're doing. That's just transparency to me.
But that just limit her to just that one street, or would it, uh, open up a thing where she can, uh, perform these duties for any grant, that's what I'm... You limited to just Beach Street, and, you know, it's saying to, uh, appoint her to perform all duties and administration as said award, which resulted in, I'm reading that, but it, giving her authority to do whatever she needs to do to get this grant, or any grant.
The applicant, so when you go back and you look at the notice of funding availability, it gives the parameters of what, you know, what you need to go after. Doesn't necessarily say streets, again, it says transportation infrastructure. So if we limit ourselves, then, you know, we're limiting ourselves. And that's what I have to add on that.
Question, okay, since, uh, according to what Mayor Lewis is saying, you pushed for time, you wanted to get the application in. Why don't you all go ahead, um, uh, do a resolution? And when you do the resolution, include Beach Street. Please, would you all consider it on there? Because you pushed for time.
I did, I did, I, yeah, thank you, sir.
Where, where, where is it in writing, see?
So it's going to be in writing.
What, what I'm saying, see, and I'm leaving the law. You know, we, we always say we'll push for time, wait till the last, till we push for time for everything, and then when it come at the last minute, that's when we end up in trouble with the pushing down. We wait till the last minute, and everything's said, now we pushed. Now we pushed to do this, we pushed to do that. So we have to be proactive managers to have a business, but do what y'all wanna do.
So, uh, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
A motion to approve the resolution to submit an application for the Delta, the DRA, State's Economic Development Assistance Program, and appoint interim mayor Yvonne Lewis to perform duties and administration there with.
Second, the second, or...
Sir.
Harris?
Sir.
Roll call vote, girl, please.
Scott? Yes. Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Wells?
No.
Question, has a resolution been drawn already? You have a copy of the resolution?
It's a draft resolution.
Just a draft? Okay, when is it gonna be available to the public? A copy of it?
Yeah, we can get your copy, I should have been on the... It should be on the, it should be on the website.
Well, when you go back to do it, can you go back and add Beach Street and put a resolution where you're about to...
We already voted to accept it as... Okay, uh, item number twelve, discuss advertising for bids for the Coca-Cola building. So as you all know, we had some gentlemen who approached us, uh, about purchasing the Coca-Cola building. They have a technology building, uh, company that they want to, uh, use the building for. They came before the council, they let everybody know what their, um, their plans were. I don't think there were any issues, um, with what they wanted to do at that time. So, the Coca-Cola building actually, uh, belongs to the city. Um, I talked with our CPA, um, and she suggested instead of just allowing one person to give us a bid for it, that we go out, you know, we advertise and go out for bids. Um, she also, well, I talked to LMA, and they also said that we could be very specific in the advertisement, that we want someone to bid on the building, but to bring some commerce in, not just to buy the building, just to, you know, just to buy it and, and hold it up. So, and attorney, I think you have some more information?
I'm just gonna recommend that we also get assistant terminal out.
I'm just gonna recommend that we also get assistance terminal out and then we get to that publication process.
Right, so, um, Lamets is one of the organizations with L M A. They help with public bids. They help with putting the bid package together. Um, they work with properties and such. Um, and so we can put something together, advertise it, get it out there, um, be specific in what we're looking for. Um, and then hopefully, um, you know, whatever happens, but we'll get somebody who'll do something with the building. Now, that building is on the historic register, okay? So that means that whoever buys it and whatever they do, there's some certain guidelines that they're gonna have to stay with. They have to keep the integrity of the building. You know, a lot of the materials and everything, if they can use the same, whatever, um, keep the facades and those, um, things. But I think it, uh, does two things. It helps us clear up a blight and it brings in, um, a new business into our town. So, um, Councilman Scott, do you have any questions, concerns? Ms. Houston?
It clears up a blight. All four.
Ms. Harris? Councilwoman Wells?
Has the city looked at anything that they can do with the building? To create revenue for the city outside of selling? Because we, we had a gentleman that came before to purchase, uh, Marlon the King Apartments. We have never moved on a project this fast before. I'm trying to figure out why we moving so fast this much? Because the individuals came forward to say they was willing to purchase Marlon the King Apartments. We never heard no discussion today. And they said that they were renovating. But on this project, we, we're going on full steam ahead. And we, the city, has the city considered any options for the building? Just selling it, just selling it. Just give everything away.
I think we're giving it away. I think we're wanting to sell.
How, how was, how many jobs is that, that, uh, business gonna create?
Did the, um, what? When the appraisal came out, did he say what kind of division, how much of cost in store?
Be honest with you, the appraiser said, let them make you an offer.
Who was the appraiser? See, the, the, the council, I, I, as me as a council, I, I don't know what's going on. I have never seen anything the appraiser say. Why, i- if you're trying to sell a building, why do we have a copy of the appraisal back, the appraisal value for the building in the council's bag? That's a question. If there was an appraisal done, why haven't the council seen the appraisal value?
So the appraisal was done, um, under the former mayor. Um, and I don't think that there was anything written down because I think the appraiser told them, take whatever offer, you know, basically take the offer that they get, you know, or let them offer themselves.
So you telling me someone, did we pick up, did we pay the ones with somebody appraised the building?
No.
Okay, so someone did an appraisal for us and didn't write anything down about the value of the building? I can't even say turn up the name.
Hey, will y'all please keep it down?
So I, I, I keep it down.
Finally, I, 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 that's what's pushing me the most with this thing.
So why do we do this?
If we're gonna talk about selling a building, when you hear you said appraisal came out, and then you say the appraisal, then write anything down. You don't have anything in the council's packet as to the value of the building. So we don't know how much the building is worth. We're gonna say, let somebody give us an offer, which you know what the appraisal value is?
No, I don't.
Okay, so how, who knows how, how much it be?
And so what I was going to say is you have a very good point, okay? You have a good point. So we can go back to the gentleman that appraised it, and I don't even know who it was. It was done under Mayor Finlayson. He just told me the information that I'm sharing with you all. So you have a very good point. If you guys would like, we can table this. We can get the appraiser to write up whatever he wants. Hang on just one second, let me finish. Okay, let me finish, okay?
No, 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 no. This is alarming. This is alarming that we have an agenda item that you all is gonna vote yes on.
Discussion.
I'm staying, whether we start or discuss, you all is going on.
There was, there was not gonna be any vote.
But what I'm saying is, why are we discussing something and there's no figures before the council?
Before the discussion is started, we can start doing whatever we need to do.
But there was an appraisal done, according to the emails we all got. The appraisal was not in our packet for us to see the value. So I don't believe in blind discussions. I don't believe in half-hearted discussions. If you're trying to sell something, we should have figures and funds. Yeah, we're paying, we still talking. So, so, I know I love this day, so what I'm saying is, there's things that we need to have as a council before us to this, have a legitimate discussion.
Ms. Jackson?
Uh, I think I missed when this first came up, uh, back, back when we, I do agree we need to get their appraisal and whatever that is, but I definitely think we need to sell that building because if it's historical, it takes a lot of money to renovate those buildings. And does the city have the money to do that? I don't believe y'all do. So I, I definitely think if the appraisal was, if somebody wants that building, I think it's a great idea that they need to utilize, not let just, let it sit. But any kind of business, I mean, of course we'd like a lot of jobs, but they, they just bring in tax revenue and it's another business in the city. I, I say, hey, let them have it.
My, my only concern is this, it, it is a historical building. There are millions of dollars. Wait, wait, I, I, there are millions of dollars in grant funding for federal historic buildings that the city of Tolu, we, we, we sign off on a resolution for this? Let's sign off a resolution to go and, uh, to research funding to renovate that building through grants. See, let's stop being small-minded and have our minds that we wanna do. Let's research, uh, a federal grant that the city can pay for and that they won't have to have matching funding.
Question. The city can have other things, yeah, I mean, to focus on, I don't mean no harm. It won't still ride my house. We need to get some, I, I raise my hand, I recognize.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I'm here.
I'm still talking.
Well, you do it all the time, Councilwoman Wells, just talk.
So, so now, somebody gonna say, order to Attorney Jackson? So now, what I'm saying.
No, Councilwoman, you do this all the time.
I can't.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, ma'am. It's okay, it's okay. Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson.
I'm still been talking.
What I was saying, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, huh, I'm sorry.
I was talking.
We're gonna let him sit. Okay, fine.
All I'm saying is, why can't the city research funding through grants? That the federal government has for buildings that's on the national registry? That we can do, like we researched the, uh, park grant and did that. There's grants available for refurbishing federal, uh, nationally historic registered buildings. So let's look at that option. So then we can renovate that building. Then we can have a tourist site that comes in that will generate revenue from total. Because it's one of the first violent companies of Coca-Cola. So when folks not only go to Atlanta, when they pass through Tulum, they'll come here. Those dollars will stay here. You sell that building, how many jobs it gonna create for Tulum? How much money or revenue if you sell this company, that's gonna generate for the city? So I'm saying let's look at options that we can look at to beautify that blight.
Ms. Jackson? Again, the city has enough to worry about. The city needs to generate revenue. The city needs to figure out how we're gonna keep our water plant and get the water coming. It's dangerous now, but the city has enough to do. If we can generate revenue, get a business in here, that does not need to be tackled to start looking into that. Anything we can do to generate revenue, bring businesses, this little place is in a mess right now and it's nothing here. I mean, it's nothing here. So we get somebody that wants to invest in a building here, we already know the building is protected. So they can't just tear it down or just change the, the whole essence of what it is. They have to keep that because it's on the historical registry. Get the revenue, like I said, get their appraisal. I think we need to know exactly what it's worth. And if we can get more than it's worth, then we do that. But we need to get that money, whatever that money the city's coughing. We need to get a business here and it shouldn't be about how many jobs. If we get a business here, more jobs, great. But if we can get a business here, that's what we need to do. Because the longer you sit here and hold it, it's just sitting there. And all we're doing is having to take care of it.
It should always be about creating jobs for the local citizens.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I heard, uh, Ms. Jackson, but I mean, I don't know what the philosophy, her philosophy of, uh, the city business, but it's all about job creation. The city can't survive without job creation. That's how the city survived. That's how Mr. Odom able to write those checks, make payroll, et cetera, by making sure that we have the taxpayers and, and businesses to come and pay those taxes. Now, to my understanding, that this bit, particular business, that trying to come here was a technology company, I don't think to put server, server racks in a building doesn't create jobs. It doesn't create a tax base in the city. There's no tax base, there's no job creation there. They can sit from their home, watch the server from, from another computer and have a business with historical value that they get the tax credit on the particular, on this particular building. So why sell something that we don't have to sell? We have to be smarter than what we're doing right now. And I can't believe interim mayor that you would even put this item on this agenda without knowing, having facts. I thought that you, well, I don't, I don't believe that you would, I, I just can't believe this. That you would put something on the agenda, you had no facts, you have nothing, uh, uh, of, of substance to give the council, to even make a decision on this. And I, I keep telling you guys, why give your city asset away? Create something smart. Create something brilliant for our city. I've not heard one council member or interim mayor on this panel that talked about job creation. The city needs jobs, we need housing, we need economic development. No, I'm, I'm, I still, damn, I got my time on here.
Now, how much time do you have?
I got a minute and a half.
Okay, well, it's a good try though. It's a good try. All right, so this was actually just for discussion tonight, okay? Obviously, we have some things that, uh, we can do for, going forward. Um, everybody has made their positions clear, okay? We have somebody that wants to come in, that wants to buy it. Mr. Wells has made his comments clear, so we'll take the discussion under consideration and we're gonna move forward right now, okay? Number thirteen on the agenda is Pelican State Partnership Agreement. We had Pelican State Credit Union come in probably about four months ago. Um, they can provide, uh, brick and mortar banking for individuals that have Chon cards or Cash App cards. It gives them an opportunity to bank with a, a real credit union. And so folks can start working on credit or doing, you know, whatever it is to enhance themselves. Uh, Mr. James Miles came in, he spoke with the council, and, uh, they asked all the questions at the time when he was there. So the next step would be to approve this partnership agreement that we have. Um, and if it is approved tonight, then what will happen is Pelican State will come in, they'll talk with our employees. Um, those employees who, um, want to go with this, to join the credit union and be under them and have some traditional banking can do so. Nobody has to do it. It's only for those individuals who would like to. Ms. Anderson.
Why do we have to go on, as, I, I, I apologize for speaking, uh, so much. But why do we have to go into an agreement with the credit union? If someone wants to go join a credit union, go join. Whether it's city employee, whether it's individual, just go and join the credit union. If it has benefits that, that, that can help individuals, join the credit union, get the benefits. So we shouldn't have, what, what does the city benefit from, from this?
So first of all, I don't think that everybody can just go and join a credit union. Starting creating.
Okay, so we're in Tolu, right? So the credit union is coming, want, wanna have an agreement with the city of Tolu, right? So that mean we're in that area.
No, if they make their agreement, then they're part of it. This is like you living here in Tolu. You can't go to the Monroe and become a part of that certain credit union. Unless you is a member, family member or a friend that prefers you there.
Most credit unions do have some sort of criteria, but let, let's, let's stay on task here, okay? What we have is a brick and mortar, uh, banking institution who wants to help some of our employees. Employees do not have to take it if they do not want to. So when Mr. Miles was here, he spoke to all of you all, all of you all had your opportunity to ask your questions and such. We have the agreement before me, so you all can either vote yes to accept the agreement or no, and we move forward.
And therefore you can do this for payroll deduction, which is one of the main reasons.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask a question on another?
Yes, sir.
So when did this guy come and make this presentation to the council?
Uh, it's been probably about four months.
Four months ago. Okay, so had he made this presentation four months ago, what is taking us along to make this partnership, going for a people board?
And just send you back on the agenda. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions? Ms. Houston? Ms. Harris? Councilwoman Wells, anything else? This time I entertain a motion to approve the Pelican State Partnership Agreement.
Motion to approve the Pelican State Partnership.
Say it again. Okay, the properly motion is second. Uh, let's do a roll call vote, Gerald.
Scott?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Wells?
No. And I wanna make sure that once we do this partnership, will we get an update on how many city employees is actually, uh, a part of this credit union? See if the partnership is even working for the city?
Absolutely.
I know it's gonna fit it to him, I didn't know it's not, so, but let's get it.
Okay, number fourteen, introducing an ordinance to adopt the municipal budgets for the city of Tolu for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and setting up a public hearing. So, uh, for everybody who does not know, typically, uh, municipalities are supposed to have their budgets amended and the new budget done by June thirtieth of each year. We obviously are past that date, so we will have a finding for not having our budget done. There's no question about it. It is going to happen. We will have a finding. Um, I had initially thought that we would have to amend last year's budget and then propose a new budget. But I called the legislative auditor yesterday and she told me that because the prior year budget was not amended before June thirtieth, that it could not be done. The year is over, it's a wrap. So we'll probably have a finding for that as well. Um, so there's no getting around it. It is what it is. So tonight, what we need to do, um, let me just go back a little bit. When we first introduced, uh, this ordinance, um, there was a error on the side of the city in putting the ordinance in the paper before it was actually introduced. That actually happened twice. So that sent us back, um, in time. After that, we, uh, the council voted to table the budgets until we got some information from Madison Point, uh, that owns the housing, uh, development, financial information. The attorney sent out a demand letter to Mr. Archie Jones. Mr. Archie Jones did not give us any information. So I contacted the legislative auditor again and said, okay, this is what our council asked for. We did not get the information. Can we move forward with our budget? And their recommendation was to go ahead, move forward with the budget so we could have something in place. We can't hold up not having a budget, hoping to get information that we're probably not going to get. So after the council asked for that to be tabled, there was a time period of probably almost three weeks when the city did not move on, um, calling the budget committee in to get everything done. And so once we set up those meetings, um, Mr. Wells came in, Ms. Harris came in. They were only able to come in once because it had just taken so long and they, they have other employment and they had other, you know, obligations that they had to do. So where we are tonight is, uh, and actually, we're not supposed to discuss this because we're just introducing the ordinance. Um, but I would like to give the budget committee an opportunity to speak, um, if there's anything that you guys want to say. Ms. Harris, we'll start with you. So, um, did you look at?
You can't hear me.
Did you look into, because of the shortage of funds to be had, about maybe moving somebody to four days a week versus five days a week? So, um, that's really kinda going into the discussion, but I'll, I'll just, uh, touch on that briefly. So in the last budget, um, we were extremely over budget, okay, in, in a lot of the line items. And I think that just comes from us not watching things as closely as we were supposed to. Councilwoman Wells, I think you guys have already heard him say many times, that's why he's adamant about getting the financials every. that's why he's adamant about getting the financials every month because then we would've known where we were, okay? So that part is what it is. Um, I don't think it's so much of cutting, I think we need to watch what we're spending. And we just were not doing that. And so I think if we are getting the financials monthly like we're supposed to, watching what we're spending, maybe amending quarterly as opposed to wait until the end of the year, that will be a little bit, uh, more on top of our, of our spending. Now, there are some items that we haven't, we will yet, you know? You did talk about four day work week for some of the employees. We've cut off all overtime, um, all sets of spending, we're cutting corners everywhere that we can. Um, when individuals, not, not the police department, but if the individual were to, um, terminate, we would really look at whether or not we're going to replace that, that person. So, um, probably getting into a little bit more than we should, but yeah, we are definitely, um, going to have to look at our spending a lot more closely. Anything else? Councilman Wells?
Yes. My first question is, who developed the budget?
Mr. Oldham.
The entire budget? Because as a budget committee, we're supposed to participate in the process of developing a budget. And Mr. Oldham, who do you report to when there are budgetary concerns?
It's whoever makes the concern.
Know what I'm saying, but that's, when you deal with the budget, who do you get a budget to?
I, it's the mayor.
The mayor. So the mayor was aware of everything that goes on with the budget?
Yeah, we discussed it.
And, and see, the reason why I'm asking this, we're gonna ask these questions because it's not just you. Because I went through a series of, of documents, uh, especially with the proposal for water plant items. And no, what was the mayor you talked to, who did you consult with on this, on these items? Those budgetary items, we had amended, we're supposed to amended it, uh, toward the end of the year when it came to purchasing items of offer funds. Who did you work with on all of those items?
I'm not sure on which items you're talking about.
Okay, I'm talking about everything we got from Smith Machine Works, uh...
Oh, you mean the-
Because that's why we have special meetings, I got a lot of questions about this budget. And I want to discuss this in a single meeting. And the reason why I'm asking because the mayor, Mayor Finister's name is nowhere on none of the proposals. I mean, I got plenty of my big plenty, I want y'all to see it too, so y'all don't think I'm crazy. See, on every proposal, Mayor Finister's name is nowhere. It says, "Attention, City of Tolu, Gerald Oldham and Yvonne Lewis." So when they're trying to say, "You're not giving us everything." And now I understand why there's so much information from the interim mayor about the budget. Because not only were you looking at the finances, but I could be wrong, but the interim mayor at that time, who was the mayor's assistant, was watching the money that was going out.
No, sir, absolutely not.
So you just signed a proposal while, you just signed a proposal?
I signed a proposal.
That mean you're responsible?
I signed it.
No, I mean, your name is on it. It said-
They, they sent it here.
Right, attention to you.
I was the administrative assistant. So information is going to be sent to me. But I can tell you right now, I didn't watch over money, we have a clerk and a pair-
Again, again, you, again-
This, this right here, I had no part in doing it, this was brought up. All this equipment and all of this was purchased by the contractor who worked that job. And then, and this lady was handed-
She was holding her name in administration.
See-
It was handed to me to name.
Right, right.
And to not, you know-
And so, that's my concern, see, that's my concern. Is that there, there was funds that was going out. Because me, nobody can put my name on none that I'm not responsible for. Nobody.
Well, we had this-
And they were part of the-
So I can't sit here and sign off on almost a million dollars, uh, I mean, uh, several hundred thousand dollars of things being purchased, and I don't know what's going out. So when I begin to look at items like this, I'm not just faulting you because it's other people that's involved in this entire process. So as the governing body, I got some more issues with the budget, so a lot-
This was the receivership.
I, I, I know, I know, I know, you said that, I mean, on December thirty first. There was a lot that we rushed and did. So there's a lot that happened financially with the last budget, and I see a lot of the strippers in the new budget, a lot of it. We're playing numbers games that don't need to be played. And I said, and right now, we also should be at, uh, since we can amend the budget, we should be at a two million dollar deficit. Because if we could not amend the budget to close the fiscal year, these two million dollar expenses are still being the butt on us. So you can't operate-
This, this right here was paid for by-
I, I, I understand. But in order to pay for that, we had to amend our budget before the fiscal year ended, we didn't do that.
That's true.
So that mean there's two hundred dollars in expenses that are unaccounted for. That since you couldn't adjust last year's budget, that mean that two million dollars has to fall over into this current budget. So we can't operate on a deficit budget, which means even the budget that you all tried to, uh, put in the ordinance in, it's a deficit budget, you can't do that. So there has to be some corrections made financially when it comes to the numbers. Because that's two million dollars, so we can't even introduce a budget in deficit, cannot do it. And so I didn't just talk about seeing the financials, I wanna see bills for payment. So we can see who we're paying, how much we're paying. So not, not just financially, I wanna see bills for payment, because that's a lot of money going out. So how we gonna account for that two million dollars that we couldn't amend last year's budget for? We gotta account for this in the budget. Am I right about that?
That's true, it's been a few-
You're right about that, you're right about that.
So, so then I, that makes me wonder, when we had the budget committee meeting that I sat in with you all, why didn't you all discuss that here?
Because-
We may have touched, well, we discussed several things, we may have touched on this, but I don't think Eric Henneman is one of the more, uh, important things that we were looking at at the time.
See, we, we, we can't act like what happened, Mr. Oldham, just happened, can't act like that. I said last year, when you voted to amend that budget, saying capital outlet, that was illegal. I said, you said it's capital outlet, it's capital outlet. I said, you can't do that, because that's considered a special fund. And special funds has to have budgets. And I said, we're gonna end up in trouble at the end of the fiscal year. I said that. Because I know if you are not amending the budget, you're not watching spending, we're gonna end up in a problem. So I don't fault you. I fault Ms. Day, Ms. Houston, and Joe G. Scott. Because every time I raise a concern by finances, they dismiss the concern by finances inside. And in, in matter of fact, Ms. Day and Mr. Scott was on the budget committee. So when we were talking about Mr. Oldham failing, they failed along with him. Because they didn't watch it. So it's not just you. It's their job to oversee, I tell you all all the time, it's our job to be the fiscal responsibility people of the city. And whenever I ask for finances, y'all never back me. And Mayor, Interim Mayor, you said you was in favor of forensic audit. And I was waiting to see one on this agenda tonight.
Is it my report?
No, I don't want to report it, I want it to be an agenda item, see, a reporter's not actionable.
Doesn't matter what you want.
But I'm saying, see, see, a reporter's not an actionable item, that we try to snick at.
I'm not trying to be-
So, so what I'm saying is put it as an agenda item so we can vote on it as a council.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not just your fault. It's the budget committee from the previous fiscal year, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Day, that didn't do anything to us.
So we-
I was on the budget committee, y'all made sure it was-
You were on the budget committee?
Yeah, yeah, one thing I always ask about every meeting, I always see financials. I asked you all to bag me on making the Mayor Finister bring the finances, you didn't bag me. I said, let's make an agenda item so he have to bring it to us. You sat quiet on me.
Okay.
I asked for a second, oh, y'all got quiet.
As the budget committee, okay? Mr. Wells, Ms. Harris, you guys met with Mr. Oldham, so is this not the budget that you guys want to introduce?
No, I, I, I had no part in developing the budget. And my question in the meeting, I clearly stated, who put the figures here? Because we didn't do it.
Okay.
So I know I'm not introducing-
So what I'm, what I'm saying then is, if you, if you guys are the budget committee, and you're supposed to be working to put a budget together, when is that going to happen?
Again, I, I have stated from day one, how the process was supposed to happen. You said back there what I said. And never once was this followed until you got in the seat.
Right.
So you was the mayor's assistant when I raised several budgetary concerns.
But I was on the budget committee, so what, all I'm asking is, you guys are the budget committee, okay? You're working with Mr. Oldham, when are you guys going to get together and put together a budget that we can introduce?
I'm ready.
Okay, so-
And so, but I'll be also stating, before, I'm, I'm, I ain't, I ain't gonna move, I just thought about it. Uh, the attorney sent a demand letter to Archie Jones, was that sent by certified mail?
Sure was.
Okay, so after he did not respond to, what's our next course of action? Because I just don't believe we should let somebody not respond to us, and we don't take no action against them, so what's, what's the next course of action?
So, uh, Madison Point is in bankruptcy. Madison Point is in bankruptcy. From the review of the records that I've been presented, which you were copying on email for those records were presented, I can't say for certain that the city has any sort of actions or claims at this time. Now, I've requested additional information that's been presented to me, and I will, I'll, I'll review it. But in the interim, what we'll do is we'll file a proof of claim, but with an amount of damages unknown. Because at this point in time, I can't say that we have any damages. We don't have, and it's not completely the city's fault, there's not been any financial information provided to the city as requested.
And how many years has that been going on? I don't know how many it's been going on. For six years.
What's y'all discussing, I'm not-
Right now, we discussing Madison Point. If they file for bankruptcy, why is that being presented to the council?
What y'all saying they owe us?
Well, we have no information.
What y'all saying they owe us their money or something, what we saying?
That's been something that the city had, had actually, a couple meetings ago, asked that we investigate. I've not been presented with any information that proves that they owe the city any money.
There, there's tax credits for those properties. So with the tax credit, those properties were sold to someone. And those taxes were sold to someone that they benefited financially from those tax credits. So we should have some type of finances that should have came to the city from those transactions. So when we sent a demand letter, there should be some second step that was supposed to happen. So if they file for bankruptcy, we should file an act to find out who are they, who are the board, the board members. And we should also be finding out, we could subpoena those financial records.
So once you're in bankruptcy, you file a proof of claim, and then you become creditor. Uh, Councilman Wells, I, I do have a concern, um, and the concern, and I'll, I'll repeat it again. I have not been presented with information from the city of Tolu, no records that can prove that we actually can make a claim.
Okay, so have you actually been finding the city those records?
I have.
Who have you asked?
You were copying on the emails where I received some records from the city, weeks ago, months ago.
Isn't it true a former mayor is a part of that group?
Yes.
Yes, the mayor, Mr. Oldham, several members from Tolu. They know what's happening? They know what's happening?
This is all that was contained.
I, I know. So that, that's, that's it, that, that's a lot of-
When was that lost, when, when was the bankruptcy filed?
I don't know, I don't have a phone in front of me.
So how did, how do you know, how do we know, you say it all happened in front of you?
No, I don't.
You, you don't remember about when, when it was filed?
The answer is no, I don't really remember.
You know Councilman Wells, when bankruptcy was filed?
I, this is my first time here. And I've been on council three years, actually, because it stayed in the audit that, you know, Madison Point had been audited six years. And so they, we, that's what came up under the thing, when we said that the city did not have, uh, or the thing, that we long had the tool of housing authority. Say it was defunct. And I said, it can't be, if the auditors are mentioning this in the audit every year. So after the discussion, it became, it was just a word of mouth thing, that was defunct, but it wasn't, it was never defunct. It was always operating, so there was always transactions happening outside the city purview. So there were some people on there that was a part of the city government who did not bring the information before the council. So every member that's only except me and Ms. Harris are well aware that that stuff was in the audit. But Mr. Joe K. Scott, Ms. Houston, and Ms. Day, it was in the audit all the time. So they seen, they was here when, uh, Madison Point came into existence. They own the council, so they know.
So Madison Point, and, and the bankruptcy for six years?
I don't know, we didn't win the bankruptcy, it's my first time here.
Have you all talked about it on the board?
Seven years, they be here sometime. They, they, they was here.
And as a proposed creditor, you probably won't be able to speak to someone on the board.
Oh, and they will be accountable for reasons.
See, and, and that's why there's a push against the investigative audit.
Well, we need one.
So an investigative audit would reveal what a lot of stuff is happening. Because they get all your accounts, they get all the funds. So that's why I said let's make it an actionable item that we can vote on, on the agenda.
Okay.
So what is the problem with not wanting to?
Hold on, just a second, just one second. Alright, so budget committee, what is your next step?
No, my next step is I wanna see all the finances, and we develop a budget. Because if you have to know what you got, how much money that's available, because as of right now, from the letter you all put out for Mayor Finister, we're broke. So can I get a budget for three million dollars, and I'm trying to figure where money come from? We got a two million dollar deficit, so I'm, I'm, I'm not stupid.
What, what is, Mr. Wilson, and two budget committee members, when do you guys want to get together? We, we, we are right now operating off of fifty percent of last year's budget, okay? So we, we hooled us to go ahead and do whatever it is we need to do to get the budget set. So when would you guys like to get together?
I'm flexible.
And let's get this done.
Is it fifty percent, is it fifty percent? Is it fifty percent or fifty percent of last year's budget?
This, this, this. Fifty percent lashes, but, which we can't operate on. Yeah, we have deficits, so you can't do it.
So let's, can we set a time now for you guys to meet together?
So, but, 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 I'm not gonna meet until we gonna have all of the finance together. I can take our work on, waste my time taking our work we're in the conference. So I wanna have all of the finances in front of me. I wanna have, I wanna have a list, I wanna have a list of every employee, how much they've gotten paid, I want, uh, from the last three years. Because I wanna see where the raises are coming from. Because every, from, from two thousand twenty-two, there's been raises in salaries. That accounts for some of the deficit that we're in. There has to be cuts in a lot of places, so we, we gotta have.
When you say you wanna see all the finances, you say employees for the last three years, what else?
Honestly, every employee, uh, of the city's salaries, for the last three years. I, I wanna see all the financials that was given to council members as part of this budget thing. Even when it comes down to us going to those conferences, all the council members' finances, to see what we've been getting outside of what we supposed to get. If there's anything.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Everything, every dollar for the last three years been given to a council member.
All finances, same.
I would say all finances, I would say all of them.
Okay, what else?
I don't think around now, but, but every, I want, uh, every vendor that's there, it's about going to budgets.
Just say all finances, you want all finances.
I got it, I know.
Reports, bank accounts, everything. Credit cards.
I request a copy of all of it.
Hold on, just, you guys have, you have, you have everybody's- Hold on, just, no ma'am, hold on, just one second. Hold on, just one second, okay? What do you guys want to?
I want, uh, I wanna make sure we have, uh, how much revenue that we're getting in video poker? What is miscellaneous income, I wanna know what the miscellaneous income, you may not want to say all this stuff in front of people, this gonna be a lot. I'm gonna need, uh, I want the interest income, I wanna know what all supplies that we're buying, all the office supplies, where those supplies are coming from? On the, uh, vehicle maintenance, what are we preparing, on a regular basis, I don't even notice. Uh, the dues that we got on the budget, what are those dues? What kind of training that we putting down the employees are going to, out of all departments? Uh, street lighting, fixed income on that, insurance, what are the insurance for? I also wanna know what is it, what checks that we got for non-sufficient funds, what was left for NSF checks? So I wanna-
Everything that we talked about in the budget.
Uh, everything.
So what do you guys think, Willby?
Y'all give me the date, I'm gonna try to-
Okay, let's set a date. Alright, Thursday?
Will it just, what, big time?
Okay. Twenty-first? Thursday the twenty-first? Or can you guys meet before then? Can you meet twice next week?
I can't meet, I'm talking to Star School back now. So I can come on Thursday if you really need it to then. I still got to work at the end.
Four thirty-four?
I did football practice. I was sitting in the morning. I had to go in the morning. I did football practice.
Okay, so I'm sorry. You said you want to come in the morning?
I like to come in the morning. Uh, I'm trying to stay champion.
Nine AM on twenty-first?
I want to look at every department's budget, love their copies. We gotta be cussing every department to get fines back in mind.
I have a comment. I have a comment.
Are you gonna be able to make that? Okay.
Uh, once again, uh, interim mayor, I can't believe, and it, it surprised me, that you will put a budget of this magnitude in the council's package. Now, I, I, I allow my, my, um, my accountant to look over this. And he, what he told me, this is the worst he's ever seen in his career. And I can't believe as a chief executive officer, that will allow this budget to cross your desk and put in a packet for the public to see. That behooves him. And that's, yes, that term. Which, whichever, whichever one, see, you.
Sit down, point man.
Yeah, whatever term it is, that word. You know? And I know I'm much more intelligent than what you're trying to do there. And I definitely know numbers. And I definitely wouldn't have had this budget to, and, and release it to the public. Knowing what I see and the markings that I've done here, there's no way. I, I would even, I wouldn't even get smart with a, with a citizen. Or try to correct a citizen.
Let me interrupt, may I?
And this, it ain't you, Mr. Mr. Odom.
But I prepared those budgets.
No, 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 Ms. Odom, listen. And, and I'm not, this has nothing to do with you.
This is a campaign, so go ahead.
No, this is not a campaign. This is not a campaign. You were campaigning in Las Vegas.
Go ahead.
This is not, this is not a campaign. Mr. Odom, I don't fault you, okay? Because you're an employee of the city. But when, when you give, when you give the budget.
Based on past experience.
When you give the budget to the chief executive officer of the city.
You got about forty-five seconds.
When you give the budget to the chief executive officer of the city. A chief executive officer should know numbers and they should know how to budgetize and know budgets. And that she hasn't done and don't know.
Anything else, sir?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so we selected a time for the budget committee to come. Um, just a couple of things under, um, the mayor's, um, update. Um, so one of the things that we have talked about, heard about, discussed back forth, whatever, um, is an investigative audit, okay? So I want to let everybody know where I feel about an investigative audit. We're audited every year, okay? I don't think that we need to have another one. However, I understand, in order for this community to move forward, there's a lot of distrust and it's probably going to have to happen, okay? So I've spoken with Mr. Scott, I spoke with Ms. Houston, and I spoke with Ms. Day, okay? They both said the same, well, they all said the same thing. They're not against the audit per se, they're against the cost of the audit, okay?
Again, now, I was not under caution. You just admitted something you never did. You was never supposed to speak to a, a council member to poll them on how.
I wasn't polling.
You asked, they both, you said they told you that they were not, they were, uh, for the audit, but. Uh, leave it alone. You just admitted to it.
Councilman Wells.
You just said it.
As I said, since this is such a serious issue, issue, I spoke with each one of them individually and asked them, were they against an audit? And they said, no, they were not against it. They were against the cost of the audit. Okay? So let me make that very clear, right? So as I said, in order for this community to move forward, we probably gonna have to do, okay? So what I would suggest is, as a council, okay, that you guys go out for proposals, see how much it's going to cost. We have the budget committee here. After we find out how much it's going to be, the budget committee puts the money in the budget and you guys vote on whether you want to do it or not, okay? It is up to you all.
I, I knew that. But again, you cannot speak to an individual council member on how they would possibly feel about an item that they may vote on. That's called getting a walking quorum.
That's right.
So if you spoke to Ms., Mr. Joe K. Scott, you spoke to Ms. Lisa Houston, you spoke to Ms. Marjorie Day that violated the open meeting law. Yes, you did. Now, that's a walking quorum. You asked them how would they feel about the audit. They said they're not against the audit, but the cost of it. And you just chose to go out and get proposals on something they could possibly vote on. Which means you already got your walking quorum on how they're gonna vote. That's a direct violation of the open meeting law.
You did come to these.
And you didn't ask us. And I would ask you. No, no, you, you can't assume that.
That's your walking quorum.
So you got your quorum, Ms. Harris, we're not gonna touch that issue. You've got a walking quorum. You not call them and ask them how they would feel about a possible item that they were out of vote on. That's gonna, that's called a walking quorum.
The same reason she.
And that's just against the law.
So what I did, as I said, I spoke with these three, asked them how they felt about the audit. They said that they were not against the audit, they were against the cost, okay? I'll say it again. So that's where we are with that. I'll tell you guys, as I said, what I propose is you guys go out for proposals. I think this is something that the community is going to want. They want to see it. And I think that, you know, that you guys probably should take this and, you know, um, do whatever it is you feel like your constituents want you guys to do.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on a second. Mr. Odom, I want you to put this in the minutes. So write it down. I'm gonna call you now. Interim Mayor Lewis stated on August.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, two thousand five, at seven forty-three PM.
Seven forty-three.
No, I'm going when you first said it. I, I, I know that, I ain't crazy. At seven forty-three PM, that she spoke with council member Scott from District One, council member Houston from District Two, and council member Day from District Four, to gauge, G-A-U-G-E, their feelings on having an investigative audit.
No, I asked them why they were against the audit.
That's not what you said. That's not what you said. To gauge their interest in having investigative audit. She stated, let me know, yes, I'm gonna make sure you get it right. Interim Mayor Lewis, I want her name in it. Interim Mayor Lewis stated that the three aforementioned council members. Scott, District One, Houston, District Two. I'm gonna get this next one. Scott, District One, Houston, District Two, and Day, District Four, stated that they were not against the forensic audit.
Wait a minute, Gerald.
No, 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 right.
No, you state that, Ms. Lewis stated.
I said, Ms. Lewis, I said, I said, I said, Ms. Lewis. Okay, again, I just, I, I said, Ms. Lewis stated that they said that they were against the investigative, uh, they were not against investigative audit, but they were against the cost of the investigative audit. I heard it. And, yes, sir, make sure that's in the minutes. I'm going.
The only other thing that I was gonna bring up was the boundaries. And I know that you, that's something that you guys wanted to discuss as well. So those two items will be agenda items at the next, uh, um, meeting and, uh, wish you guys would give us some thoughts.
Who, who wanted to discuss that? Who wanted to discuss the boundaries, the three people?
No, everybody.
Ah, you talking to me, so I want me.
No, 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 I haven't talked to anybody. We have brought this up several times in meetings. We need to do this about the boundaries. I'm letting you guys know that I'm going to put this on your next agenda so that we can discuss.
I have a question. Since you brought about boundaries, uh, I have a draft that you all did, not just counsel, the previous, the previous council about annexing the county's apartment. And I called Mr. Odom today to ask him about the resolution. And he said for me to talk to this stuff, see, he's in the process of trying to find. But it's not this, Ms. Day was on the council. And I wanted to know if that resolution was passed in order to annex county's apartments into the city limits. I did go and get a new map. I have my map already. But that was a draft drawn up. Uh, the previous, like I said, Mr. Odom is aware of it and saw it in his self feel. And we need to know, when you said the boundaries, that was clicked in my mind. We need to discuss that at the next meeting. So when election time come up, we'll know what areas we need to get. Thank you. Alright?
Um, before we close, are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Um, uh, the train is left, but I want to comment from the public hearing out there at the community center. Uh, when I was speaking about the flushing, the, the, the little poison from our homes and that we should be giving a credit for, I did not care for the fact that the state and Magnolia, who is a multimillion dollar company, I don't know, or maybe more, I don't know. They all looked at our city attorney. For her to get up and go against us and say it was a donation of public funds, which is not correct at all. But I had an issue that they looked for her to get at us. That was a problem for me. And I have a problem with the fact that every time Magnolia has a contract or whatever, she's just go with it. She, she doesn't look like she assesses it. She just says go with it. The million dollars that was paid. The clerk said, don't pay it. I'm clear from the meeting that she told you all to pay it without even addressing if we could afford it. So my point being with that, that really bothers me, that we're paying her, as far as I know. I don't think Magnolia's paying her. I don't think the state is paying her. But all of them was directly at her, for her to get me in line. And that was a problem for me. And I think she needs to understand, she works for the city and not against us. So that was the point. I was gonna make it when she was here, but she left.
Attorney Jackson, I paid attention to what that man said at that meeting. He said him and Attorney Grady has a great relationship. Which means if we really wanted him to come to a meeting here, she was the contact person. I've been saying for a long this. That's why I recommended to terminate her. She does not represent Tallulah. When there's something that will benefit Tallulah, she's mute on it. Like she said, I don't think we can get this. But when it came down to cutting the folks' war out to pay the sewer, she made sure that that came back to the agenda and we hold it on it. And, and, and I know she told, I mean, I, I ain't say I know. I assumed that they told Ms. Day what to do to get that open on there. I assumed that. Cause soon she say somebody make a motion, we reconsider. They say, I reconsider, make a motion. Didn't, didn't hesitate. So she, I, I made it clear on several occasions where she has not represented Tallulah. Whenever Magnolia wanted something, she came and made sure that it happened. And we should not allow her as a city attorney just to say, I don't think we can do any claims. But I knew, I knew after the, the wall of the volume merger failed through, her, her relationship must have changed.
Alright, Washington is late. It's South Osseti, Clanton. Have a long seat for a jerk.
I have, I have commented, but I guess you own the time.
I know why I could come in a few.
I hear you, man, this.